I'm also glad that we have a full council chamber, but before we make the trophy presentations to the winners of our annual Suratoma Christmas Parade, let me ask that Ms. Whitby Coleroe.
Gibson.
Present.
Yilding.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Barry.
Here.
Bestel.
Present.
Height.
Here.
And Witcher.
Present.
Aquormis present.
Thank you, and before we do, we again like to welcome Ms. Robinson. She is a new representative from Ward Two, and we're very happy to have you with us. And with that, can I ask that we all stand for the prayer to be led by Alderman Witcher, followed by the pledge by Alderman Height.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening. We ask that you watch over our servicemen and women as they serve our country in the military. We ask that you watch over those who stand in wait, families, and guide them through this time of service to the country of our military people. We ask that you watch over us and guide us as we make decisions. Help us as we go into this new year and guide us and help us make decisions that would be reflective of your spirit, your soul. We pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your guard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Gibson.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Gibson, seconded by Alderman Witcher, approval of amendments to the previous meeting, which is December 23, 2002. Be approved and submitted on the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
On the communications, data with blanket motion.
You want to do the presentations first, Mayor?
Let's just go ahead and get the communications and then... So moved.
Second.
Is there anyone you want to pull out?
Wait just a sec. No. Have those on the speed bumps.
Yeah.
No, that's fine.
All right.
One through eight.
All, no council member asking for anyone to be pulled on the motion that we accept and file communications one through eight?
Gibson.
Yes.
Yilding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Bestel.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
On the special call, those of you, all of us, just rather than read the special call, I'll just summarize what it is now, withdraw it. We were going to appoint, I was going to appoint with subject of council confirmation, Al McLandon, to serve on the Catta Board, and we found out afterwards that the exact day of the Catta Board meeting conflicts directly with the monthly meetings of the Board of Directors, the Boys and Girls Club, so Al was not able to. So unless there's an objection, I'll just, without going through that, just withdraw the special call. Would you do that, Ms. Whitby, and now? It's certainly my pleasure. Our parade director for many years under the sponsorship of the North Rock Suratoma Club, Dean Edwards. We want to thank Dean for another terrific parade this year. The weather was good, great in fact, and at the parade, I think everybody had a terrific time. We've got trophies we're going to present. We're also happy with the assistance of Mr. T. Richard Smith, a member of the Suratoma Club. All of us, I know at this council table, know Mr. Smith. He helped us for a number of years at the Parks and Recreation Department. We appreciate T. Richard being here and appreciate his longstanding friendship and help. And with that, if I could come and ask for Dean and T. Richard's assistance, we'll make those presentations at this time.
Good to meet Pat Carl, our president.
That's right. Pat, where are you? I'm sorry. I didn't see you. You weren't up on the front row, so it's good to have Pat Carl here, the president of Suratoma. Pat's going to help, and I think T. Richard and Dean are going to...
Do you bring one for everybody?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this thing working? Okay. I'd like, this is my 19th year to work with the Suratoma Club on a parade, and I think this is one of our better ones. I never had to thank everybody, but I'd like to thank a few people this time. I'd like to, we've got about eight or 10 people, I'd like to thank Jimmy and Junior Phillips. They've been bringing the trailers for our parade for 19 years. Art, Condon and Wirehouse, Art Eastman, he started that 19 years ago, loaning us a bulk trailer to put our Santa Claus sleigh on. The North Little Rock Vista Center, they furnish the candy and sponsor our Santa Claus slate. The mayor and Becky Taylor really been supportive of all these years of our parade. The mayor's led the parade just about every time he was in town. I think every time he's here, he's led the parade as grand marshal. The North Little Rock Parks have always contributed a lot. Willie Escalardo, Kenny Johnson, and Bob Rhodes, they've really supported it. Pro Shop furnished the golf carts this year. The North Little Rock Police, they still do a great job lining up and keeping everybody out of trouble. We always got to have the police, the North Little Rock Suratoma Club, really help on this. Robert Boles, him and Mr. Art is going to, we've got two photographers this time, so we'll be able to give pictures. They did a good job. That's why we've got a backup. Robert, he's got his backup. So we...
Backing up everything?
Well, I don't like that.
Lightly slugged.
But at this time, I'd like to announce our Suratoma Special Award to the North Little Rock Vista Center. That's the one that threw about $500 worth of candy. If anybody from the Vista Center, or if not Curtis Fowler was our Santa Claus, could he...
Well, Curtis, we're good. It matters. Bob Rhodes, he's close there.
Curtis, you want to come out and get it? You threw all that candy.
All right. He hasn't helped his spirit a little bit.
I did.
Let's move right over here. Take a walk with him. All right. Thank you very much. Happy Christmas.
Thank you, Curtis. That was his 16th year. He said he had trouble getting him a sleigh this time. Another Suratoma Special Award is to Arkansas Search and Dog Association.
All right. There we go. And we want to tell y'all how much we appreciate what you do, not only for those in the community, but those all across the state. It's a very important job. We want to, we want to help a little bit for your canine help, too. They are all special love. Hopefully we like our, Mr. Gray knows we like our animals a little bit. We appreciate the job, y'all. There you go. Congratulations. Thank you. You're welcome. Appreciate this. A volunteer organization. Loving. I want to say we really appreciate that support. Thank y'all. Thank you, partners, too. That's, okay.
Okay. Best high school entry, teachers of tomorrow. Anyone here from the high school? Okay. Now, number four, the best...
Y'all are up. They're sitting a little warm. Thank you very much. Take care. We appreciate it. Oh, yeah. Sure. Yeah. I need to borrow one of those by every county. They don't know that.
Number four, the best rule fire truck entry, Seven Hills Fire Department. Anyone here from Seven Hills Fire Department? What about East Blasky? He's from East Blasky? Okay, you, side for first. East Blasky.
Guess what? Y'all are going to get...
Get two trophies.
We get both of them held.
I guess I give it back to her.
Is anybody from East Blasky here? That's East Blasky?
Yeah, I'm going to have to swap.
Okay.
Well, here y'all. If Dean, you don't have any, then I'll take one. I'll change out the eagle on top.
I don't know if you can change. Oh, well, maybe.
Okay, number six, anybody from MacAlpin?
All right, let's think. We can do it a little better.
They're tied for first.
All right, congratulations. We sure appreciate it.
About from Little Rock here?
All right, we can take this one off and put it on the...
Okay. First place is North Little Rock. I know there's someone here from...
All right, come on over. I'm going to, no, go ahead. I'm going to get the front up here.
Be careful in handling.
This is the best marching group, North Little Rock High School, ROTC.
Anyone here from the high...
They've got a big ROTC. Give it up there.
What about the Arkansas National Guard, the Youth Challenge Program? First place.
There we go. There we go. Stand right in our... There we go. All right, we appreciate all the people, y'all listening, all y'all.
This is third place, North Little Rock Sanitation, Beston Municipality.
All right.
Third place.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Second place, North Little Rock Electric. All right.
Anyone here from Electric Department?
I hear they're keeping the lights on.
Okay. Well, I know...
All right. Bob, just give that to Bob.
First place, Municipality, the North Little Rock Animal Shelter.
All right, there we go. All right. Crisp and animals, too.
Oh, that's electric.
All right, thank you.
Where's the toys? North Little Rock Parks. Okay, North Little Rock Parks had second place tie.
All right, we got second place tie. We got one person here. Have you got somebody else here?
Bob's here.
There you go.
Oak Grove Hornets. Anyone here, cheerleader from Oak Grove? What about Sherman Park Cheerleaders?
Oh, here we got Sherman Park Cheerleaders. Marlisha, Marlisha's here from the Sherman Park Cheerleaders. All right. Thank you, Marlisha. We appreciate it.
First Arkansas Timberwolves AAU basketball team from Four Dice. I doubt if they'd be here, but...
Oh.
They had first place.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. We appreciate it. Thank you.
A tie with them was upward basketball and cheerleaders.
Upward, upward. All right. Thank you, Ally. Y'all come back next year.
Okay, this is the best entry fire truck from North Little Rock Local Union 35. Anyone here that accept this?
Union 35 for the best fire truck. All right.
Andy.
Hey, watch, you've already been immortalized, so we don't need mortalizing.
Okay. Number 22, best dance musical entry. We had a tie. First, North Little Rock School of Dance. And anyone here at North Little Rock School of Dance, first place? I know Ms. Karen's here. They got her.
All right, bless. She gets both up there. We appreciate North Little Rock School of Dance, too. We'll have, we'll save it. All right, then. Ms. Karen, come on up. I think it was her.
Yeah, sure.
All right, now we got her.
Encore!
There, move over.
There we go. There we go. Oh, there we are. Oh, my, my. Y'all want to go on two different channels? Let me stand behind you.
Man, the photo loss, man.
All right, boy, there's a lot of people taking.
Hey, you got a few more parents that want over here, Pat.
Yeah, we're going to give everybody a chance to come take pictures here. All right. All right, all right. Anybody wants to rotate in? Everyone just stay here for photos. All right.
Here, get on the layer. He wants to fly.
All right, man. Well, I'm in here as a JT.
This is going to take 30 minutes.
All right, here we go.
Take three.
Yeah.
Linda. Linda's mine.
That's where I went.
You can sing the five fingered one, dude.
I'm just kidding.
Anyone here from the east campus, freshman band?
East campus, east campus. We appreciate the east campus freshman band. Everybody give them a round of applause.
Lashley Family Riders. Anybody here from the riding club?
What about No Limit Riders? No Limit Riders, all right.
He took it. He took it. T. Richard got it. Jimmy Hilbig.
Thank y'all very much.
We need to talk.
Everybody say hello to Sam.
We have first place tie for D. and J. Locksmith. Is anyone from D. and J. Locksmith here?
All right, here we go.
First place tie, One Bank. Anyone from One Bank? B.A. Institute?
All right.
Scout Troop 661. Anyone from Scout Troop 661?
We appreciate them.
Okay, number two, the Joey of Givens, Lone Oak Girl Scout, 436. Anyone here from Lone Oak?
Lone Oak Girl Scout, 436.
Cup Pack, Cup Pack 87. Anyone here from Cup Pack 87?
Cup Pack 87, here we go.
We got first place, Brownie Troop 110. That's the motivated bunch.
Brownie Troop 110. I did, I saw one there.
Kind of like a Ford, isn't it? Once you get it parked, keep it back together.
All right, we got it. We got it. Everybody else got it. Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
We got a second place from the British Motoring Club of Arkansas. I know Bob Carl's here.
There we go. There we go.
We got a first place for Rock City Antique Cruisers. Anyone here from Rock City Antique Cruisers? Best club entry, Arkansas Derby. Does anyone? Arkansas Derby.
Best entry, Sherman Park Teen Pageant. Sherman Park Teen Pageant. There we go. Come on, y'all get all over here.
We have special recognition award for the Heavenly Hound. Thursday Dog.
All right, there you go. Thank y'all very much. We appreciate it. We enjoyed it. Come back again.
Best school performing group, Anderson Tequando Center. Mr. Anderson here? Anyone here from the North Little Rock High School Band, senior band? Okay. Best miscellaneous entry, third place, Melrose Atleaks. Anyone here?
All right, here we go.
This is from Salt Lake.
All right, thank you. Time out. We got... Time out. We're not timing out. All right, North Little Rock Police Department, that's right.
That's Coke, yes.
All right. Where's the chief? No, Coke. All right, come on. All right, thanks a lot.
Better hope his work was just...
Oh, man, that's true. Well, thank you, Robert. All right.
North Little Rock Citizen Fire Alumni. Is Ms. Finch here?
They are.
Kind of concerned about them, too.
Were they both on the fire department at one time? Best church float, third place, New Life Ministries. This is a Spanish church, first time they've been.
All right, well, we appreciate it. Marcus, what's your name? Marcus, yes. We go ahead, man. Along with the folks. Thanks for all the love.
Second place, Park Hill Baptist Church, Girls in Action. Anyone?
Oh, we have a girl.
Girls in Action, Park Hill.
That'll work. That'll work. Come on up. All right, B.A. leader, here we go.
First place, Lakewood Methodist Church.
All right. All right.
Well, that's me. This, the next one is a plaque for Curtis Fowler. He's been our Santa Claus for 16 years and... He's been there at Santa Claus for sixteen years and... We're gonna get him an elevator next year.
He can play the part, he was big enough to be that Santa Claus.
Uh, this last award, this, this is the mayor's cup. This is the most expensive of the bunch. And it goes Miss Karen Dance Studio.
Put a forty in that. And then you're gonna go to Katia after this is over.
He's taking Dan.
Appreciate, appreciate everybody participated. Also, I'd like to thank the chamber, they let me have an office down there and do this parade, so got all my mail down there.
Thank y'all very much, we appreciate it, have a safe trip home.
Diane!
We told Paul his time's coming.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna be in about three years. Yeah, I might, about two to about three years. Yeah, I'm already around with my camera. We also want to thank Dr. Dee Bennett, former council member, for being here. We appreciate Dee, all of what you do, and we're glad to see you. In addition to having served us with the, with, with great distinction in the Arkansas General Assembly and certainly an argument for term limits that, that doesn't do us what we'd like to have done when we get some good folks over there, so we appreciate you. With that, could we go to no old business and start with new business then?
Resolution 0301, Mayor Hayes and Alderman Yielding.
Think we want it called?
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a ground lease agreement, allowing T-Mobile USA to co-locate with Sprint PCS at the fire station located at 3415 Magnolia Street.
Now, motion?
Motion.
Move for adoption.
Uh, motion made and seconded by Alderman Yielding on the motion.
Question, please, sir.
Uh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, I do have a question about the exhibit, Exhibit A. It says Lot 22, Block 33. That would indicate that they're leasing the entire block, lot. I don't think it's the case.
Uh, one A says use a portion of the property. And then it shows the portion that they're gonna use.
On Exhibit B.
Right. And then they're gonna relocate the, uh, for the firemen where they park. They're gonna build, you know, they're relocating that. And then co-locating on the tower.
Of course, the, the description under option lease under A says Exhibit A. It doesn't say anything about B or, or the subsequent.
Mr. Sussie, you think that needs to be amended? And if so, would you suggest it?
No, I, I think this will be more than sufficient to describe it. Obviously, we're not renting to them our fire station. And more particularly that the contract cites the co-location with the existing agreement. If you look at Exhibit B, it has a sketch of the area to be rented. I think it would be okay, and I'll take another look at it before the veto period expires as well, Alderman.
One C also require, refers to Exhibit B. And it says T-Mobile lease area and has an arrow pointing to the square. So, that's the only area they're gonna get.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0302, Mayor Hayes, Alderman Vestal and Barry.
I think we want that called.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a lease agreement with the Amboy Community Food Pantry for operation of a food pantry at the Amboy Fire Station at 100 Auburn.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0303, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution appointing James G. Dietz to the North Little Rock Planning Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Uh, speaking of term limits, all, Representative Dietz also was caught by that little six-year, uh, uh, hook along with, uh, Dr. Bennett. Uh, James is in, uh, the audience, and, and we sure appreciate his service then, as well as all of what you do, uh, serving on the Board of Directors, the Boys and Girls Club, among other things. And we, again, appreciate what you're about to do by entering in service to the Planning Commission. Thank you very much. Next item?
Resolution 0304, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Tom Brown to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Move for adoption.
Second. Yeah, I might need to hold that a little bit, uh, how, how's that project? Starting on a Wednesday, okay. Okay, uh, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Uh, Tom is a, is a good friend, uh, uh, more particularly because of the lady he married. Uh, Fay is, uh, the one that runs the police department down there, and we sure appreciate both of them. Uh, and, and Tom's past service as well as now continued service, uh, on the Board of Adjustment. We, uh, we appreciate both of you, and, and be careful on that new scooter that you got there. Okay. Uh, with that, thanks. Uh, next item?
Resolution 0305, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
Resolution reappointing Haroldine Wilson to the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Is Haroldine here? Uh, we appreciate her, uh, service and, uh, and look forward to, to that, uh, uh, continued, uh, work on the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. We appreciate it, thank you very much. Next item?
Resolution 0306, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution appointing John Rowley to the Lakewood Recreational Area Improvement District Number Four Board of Assessment.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Did I see John out there?
Yeah, he's out there.
Yeah, okay. John, thanks a lot, we appreciate it, we... That board is, uh, is very active and, uh, and has a lot of, uh, activity to, uh, say grace over, and we sure appreciate y'all and, uh, and what you and your other fellow commissioners are, uh, are working on out there. We, we like to be good partners. Next item?
Resolution 0307, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution certifying local government endorsement of Unity Plastic Incorporated to participate in the Advantage Arkansas Program, also known as the Arkansas Enterprise Zone Program Act 947 of 1993.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0308, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution transferring funds and adjusting budget amounts in the 27th and 28th Year CDBG Program and approving the financial management plan dated December 9th, 2002.
Motion.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson? Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 0309, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership with city year program.
Have a motion?
I'll move, I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'm assuming it's coming out of the city youth funds in the budget.
That would be my intent, yes. Uh, on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much, we have Melody Myers and Jeff Daly are in the audience. Uh, we look forward to, uh, starting, uh, and, uh, having a good partnership for this year. Thank y'all for being here. Next item?
Ordinance 0301, Mayor Hayes.
Uh, read it.
This is an ordinance known as application privileged license ordinance. I mean, certain section in Chapter 98 of North Little Rock Mississippi Code, first reading.
I'm gonna go ahead and hold that, uh, read it the next time, and then hopefully we'll have an amendment the first meeting, uh, no, I intend to have an amendment the first meeting in, uh, in February. I did have a meeting last week with a committee of the, uh, uh, chamber, and we began discussions hopefully along the line that will find a consensus, uh, we ought to know, or I should know by the end of the month, uh, they have several meetings, uh, that are going to be discussing, uh, several items that we had under discussion, and I look, uh, forward to, uh, bringing a, uh, an agreed-to piece of legislation, uh, to amend this, uh, uh, item. With that, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask you, uh, we still don't have an attachment A, that what you're saying?
That's correct. That's, that, that what attachment A will be. Uh, with that, it'll be held then. Next item?
Ordinance 0302, Alderman Gibson and Yielding.
This is an ordinance allowing special use for U-Haul, Chalk and Trail rental business in a C3 zone for certain real property located at 3524 Camp Robinson. First reading.
Mayor, I'd like to refer this back to planning with the changes that we have in Section 1, which increases the size of the property. Ask them to reconsider it under that section.
Is there, that's proper motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Dobbin, I mean Robinson, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Just, just one thing I might point out, that they, that server, about once a year, I'm Mayor Lehman, so don't, uh...
Oh, that's okay.
After fourteen, I, I get, I still get tagged one, about once or twice a year. Next, uh, item?
Ordinance 0303, Alderman Vestal.
Call it, please. Second.
And ordinance rezoning certain property located at 5501 MacArthur Drive in City North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C3 to C4 zone to allow an auto repair and U-Haul rental business by meaning ordinance number 3171 of City North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Uh, Father Mayor, uh, I'd like to take this to the third reading, so we could discuss it and vote on the issue.
I make motion for them. Well, motion, spend the rules is the proper motion.
Spend the rules.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, spend the rules?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And ordinance rezoning certain property located at 5501 MacArthur Drive in City North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C3 to C4 zone to allow an auto repair and U-Haul rental business by meaning ordinance number 3171 of City North Little Rock, Arkansas, second reading.
Like to spend the rules, place the ordinance on its third reading? Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
And ordinance rezoning certain property located at 5501 MacArthur Drive in City North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C3 to C4 zone to allow an auto repair and U-Haul rental business by meaning ordinance number 3171 of City North Little Rock, Arkansas, third and final reading.
Alderman Vestal?
Mayor, we need to make an amendment to, so we can include the maps included, so legislation would be correct.
Alright, there's a motion, is there a second? Does everyone have the maps?
Yep.
Alright, motion made and seconded, uh, on the motion to attach the maps that were not included at the time of filing?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Hite?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Alright, uh, it's on the floor, Alderman. I know that, I think there was a lady, I don't know if she's here, that called, uh, me just before council and indicated a concern. I'm not sure if you had a chance either.
Uh, no, I haven't had a chance to visit, but I have had several calls about this particular piece of legislation, and, uh, there was a petition going around and, uh, affected in the neighborhood that's adjacent to this area, uh, that was opposed to this, and at the time, I received a call before the meeting, and it was, uh, that they had fifty-six signatures, but they were unable to get to me before the time of, before the council meeting. And, uh, that was all in opposition to this, and, uh, that's, the applicant...
The applicant?
Is, um, requesting from C3 to C4 in a zone that is currently the main artery into the Burnt Park area. And, uh, I filed this legislation because I believe that every applicant should have the opportunity to come for the council and have their legislation brought here, but, uh, will not be voting in favor of this legislation.
Uh, it, uh, I think the applicant also would like to, uh, have this for special use. I know it's not what it says.
Well, right now, right now, it's, it's open for discussion, and Alderman, Barry, you have the floor in terms of discussion, uh, it's on the...
If I could, could offer an amendment to amend this to special use?
Uh, Mr. Uh, City Attorney?
Certainly, I'd, uh, recommend if y'all were to do that, to get the, uh, get the applicant to agree to it as well.
She's here.
Okay, uh...
That's, uh, that's what you wanted, right, Billy, was special use?
Uh, I might suggest that, you know, that, that we hold this, uh, uh, and see about straightening this out, uh, I would think it might have a better chance of being dealt with, uh, but I'll certainly leave it up to the sponsor and, uh, and, and the, to the council to award.
Robert?
Yes.
Um, when this went before the Planning Commission, it went as rezoning originally, is that correct?
Originally, it went as rezoning, and, uh, the applicant had the meeting, can ask for a downgrade of the request, which he did, uh, the planning commission was, had concerns about the appearance of, of moved a lot of wrecked vehicles there and was crowding the corner with numerous U-Haul vehicles. I believe the request was downgraded to rental of U-Haul vehicles only, uh, he's allowed in C3 to do minor auto repair. But I don't know whether this request is for full auto repair or not.
Zach, this is the rezoning, so it's, it's gonna change the zoning. It's a proper, it'll allow, it'll, it'll allow both to exist or not.
Yes.
Uh, if they want to refile for, um, a special use, if that, if she's willing to do that, then I withdraw this legislation.
You don't want to amend it?
No.
I have a question.
Alright, Robert, stay up there.
Robert, stay up there. If, if they, if they went to Planning Commission and they ask, uh, for a rezoning, and then they downgraded it to a special use, and then the Planning Commission, uh, made a decision that as, against it, then they have to wait a year before they can go back to Planning Commission. Unless the council...
Directed back.
Unless it's directed back. So, uh, if you want to make an, uh, if you want to amend it to a special use and then send it back to the Planning Commission, you could do that, or you could amend it to special use and we could just deal with it tonight.
Alright.
I'd like to amend it to special use.
I would.
Is that a motion? I'll second, be seconded.
What's, what's the proper amendment on, on something like that? Let's just address that first.
What I would do, and we need to clarify what the amendment's to, uh, is it special use for auto repair and U-Haul rental?
No, uh, it's special use for, use for U-Haul.
Yeah, what I would recommend doing is amend, uh, Section 2 is hereby, in the second line, well, first sentence, but second line in the paragraph, it's hereby amended to allow a special use for a, uh, U-Haul rental business of said property, and then it continues. And then obviously change the heading as well. Now, would I like to let you know, you could refer this back...
Well, you might end up doing that.
Yeah, you could refer this back.
I'm gonna amend it right now.
Yeah, Mayor, but you could refer this back without the amendment.
Understand that.
Yeah.
Alright, there's been the...
Now, would I like to let you know, you could refer this back.
Well, you might end up doing that.
Yeah, you could refer this back.
Right now.
Yeah, Mayor, but you could refer this back without the amendment.
Understand that.
Yeah.
All right, there's been a motion to amend reflecting that this instead of a rezoning would be a special use for a U-Haul. Is there any discussion on that, Ms. Robinson?
When this was presented before the planning commission and it stated it was a C-3, you know, for, it was a special use for C-3, there were some special conditions attached to this. And so I'm just trying to see, you know, if we wanna add those special conditions or what.
I think what they, our original intent, I talked to Ms. Warren, is to bring the legislation if they changed it with the attachment of all the.
Conditions?
Conditions.
Okay.
Do we have those available?
Yes, I have them.
But planning still turned it down with it.
Yes.
They turned it down to the.
Now, they turned down the special use or they turned down the rezon?
They turned, they, they amended it in the planning commission to a special use and then turned it.
The motion before us is right now, and I assume the conditions with your amendment, does that attach the conditions on the special use?
I've never seen a copy of the amendment. Excuse me, the attachment that was amended.
Lena's got a copy.
I have a copy.
All right. Do we want to attach that? Is that, is your motion, Mr. Berry, to, to attach it, I mean, to amend the special use with the attached conditions?
Yes.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, is Mr. Gibson, Alderman Gibson, looking at that?
Yes.
You're saying two things.
This isn't what I was looking for. The exhibit A.
This, what, what they, what they asked for in, in, we just destroyed.
Oh, I don't have the exhibit.
Can we get a copy of that?
That's what, oh, yeah. That's what they gave you. I asked for.
Mayor, I do not have a copy of the, the special conditions they placed on there. It's not part of the exhibit, Alderman.
Uh, I've, I've.
Mayor, in light of that situation, I'm gonna withdraw the legislation so that they can bring back legislation for a special use with the proper conditions attached.
I think, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, unless there's objection, I'm gonna let that request of the sponsor take precedence over whatever might be pending and, and it's on third and final reading. And so unless there's objection, the sponsors ask that that be withdrawn, we'll bring it back in a proper form. Any discussion on that?
There is no discussion.
All right. That's what we'll do then. Withdrawn.
Mayor, I give you that I got a letter of apology from the Miami City Station, Miami Labor Department, and asking you to forgive him for man he did something he did not really want to do, was a prejudice to any mayoral benefit, if you please.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think it'd be a good idea if, if we could, but I, I, right now, I think that the problem is, is more one of, of really what's being requested and it's a little disjointed. So, I think what, what the intent is, is to bring it back in a form that is much more responsive to what the request was.
Are you saying?
No, ma'am. I'm saying that the, the next meeting, assuming that the legislation's filed, which I understand it will be, next meeting in the council.
One thing I want you to note is that minutes, those, that requirement is that they would still allow both businesses to be there, not just one of them, is that the minutes required in their special use that they'd be able to have an auto repair shop and a U-Haul.
Because the, the C-3 already allowed for minor, minor auto.
But, but you're asking.
But your amendment did not address.
Did not address that. It just referred U-Haul only, only.
You need to make sure when it's brought back that it addresses exactly what the, the, you know, the, what the sponsor intends and what the citizens are in fear. All right, with that, it's withdrawn. Next item.
Ordinance 0304, Mayor Hayes, Alderman Bestle and Berry.
Uh, we, I think we want that called.
This is an ordinance is on a certain property located at 100 Auburn in the City of North Rock Arkansas from R1 to R2 zone to allow for a food pantry by amendment ordinance number 3171 of the City of North Rock Arkansas. First reading.
Suspend the rules, place the ordinance on its second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
In ordinance reason, certain property located at 100 Auburn in the City of North Rock Arkansas from R1 to R2 zone to allow for a food pantry by amendment ordinance number 3171 of the City of North Rock Arkansas. Second reading.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules, place it on third reading. Second. On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
And it's 0305, Alderman Thomas.
Call it, please.
This is an ordinance allowing special use for a church, office, library, nursery, and food pantry in an R4 zone for certain real property located at 813 Hickory Street in the City of North Rock Arkansas. First reading.
I'd like to move that the rules be suspended and placed on a second reading.
Second. On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
In ordinance reason, special use for a church, office, library, nursery, and food pantry in an R4 zone for certain real property located at 813 Hickory Street in the City of North Rock Arkansas. Third and final reading.
On the question.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ordinance 0306, Alderman Thomas.
Call it, please.
This is the ordinance allowing special use for a solid waste transfer station in an I-2 zone. First reading.
Suspend the rules, place on its second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
In ordinance reason, special use for a church, office, library, nursery, and food pantry in an R4 zone for certain real property located at 813 Hickory Street in the City of North Rock Arkansas. Third and final reading.
On the question.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Ordinance 0306, Alderman Thomas.
Call it, please.
This is the ordinance allowing special use for a solid waste transfer station in an I-2 zone. First reading.
Suspend the rules, place on its second reading.
Second.
On the motion.
Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
Yielding.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Berry.
Yes.
Bestle.
Yes.
Height.
Yes.
And Witcher.
Yes.
Alderman Thomas. I, I just, I just want to say one thing too, that this has been before the planning commission was approved there. Go ahead, Alderman Gibson.
It's just to make sure that we understand their route into this piece of property. Is that's gonna be using, how wait, using 391?
No, no, no 391. They're here, I'd like to ask.
Okay. Because how they gonna, because that mean, we're concerned about that section of Faulkner Lake Road, obviously, from 440 out.
And, and they're, they're here, if you'd like to ask them, I, I was out there today and I think I understand exactly how they're doing it, but they're not gonna use the, the 391 at all and there's a short distance that they're using the road. Go ahead.
Can you introduce yourselves?
President, Mayor, and I'm a Ford broke the engineer for the project. Question.
Question on how you're gonna make access to that property with your, with the loads of trucks.
Actually, what we've done is we've redesigned the exit so that it leads back to 440 and up to 391 and the vehicles exiting our property will not have access back to 391.
So. Okay, so the route's gonna be down Faulkner Lake Road?
It'll be back towards the east and back to 440.
Okay.
But, yeah, well, yeah, wait.
Last.
440 Faulkner to the side and then back to 440 would not go to 391.
I understand it. My whole concern is that, having grown up out there and knowing the condition of that road, what, what will be the average weight of your trucks that'll be on that road?
Less than 80,000 on the AT wheelers. There's garbage doesn't compact it to meet the 80,000 criteria.
All I want to do is everybody to be aware that there, it's a perfect site for it. Our problem's gonna be is the condition of Faulkner Lake Road there. If we're not careful, it's gonna greatly deteriorate.
Let me, let me make reference to the use of Faulkner Lake Road. Of course, I grew up out there since 1960. Well, the grass farm was there and our trucks were 80,000 pounds. Right next to me was the Wilcox Grass Farm. That has now since been sold and shut down. So, the heavy use of Faulkner Lake Road has diminished greatly and we hope that the fact that the, the trucks that we're gonna be transferring out will be less than 80,000 pounds on a greater average.
And I think, I think that one time it was thought of of having a, a concrete plant there that, that's further up, it's not gonna be using that road now.
It's further. Bye.
I know, I talked to our city engineer, I know Ed, you're here, Mike Smith indicated to me that we're in contact with the county because there's some, some problems that we're having with Faulkner Lake Road. Is that, are you familiar with that? Come on over here to the microphone.
There are no shoulders.
That's right.
Of course, the road is fairly narrow and the shoulders have problems with sloughing off and, and really potholes that develop and on occasion, we've had filled them up and have worked with the county in keeping that road maintained, so it's, it's been in fairly good condition.
I know, I talked to Mike today and he mentioned that he is in conversation with the county about doing some repair work out there. I don't know in, in great detail what, what he was talking about, because it was a very brief conversation. Are you familiar with what he's talking about in conjunction with his discussion with the county? Okay, well, maybe, maybe he's, has done some work that perhaps you're not aware of.
We've had a couple of areas that have failed, uh, because of water getting in the road bed and we had to go in occasionally and patch that back up. Close to 440. And it's just a recurring problem.
Well, we should adopt this tonight. I want you to get with Mike in the morning and, 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 you know, discuss with, with our, our applicants here, the proposed use and, and let me know what your, what, if any concerns you might have so that we won't, we won't wake up surprised anyway and I'll have, still have that period of time to address it, five days if necessary.
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to say too, that the section that we looked at today is in good shape. It's like you said, it's up there where the concrete people are coming out, it might be a little bit rough, but it's in good shape there where they're talking about. And, and the two, the, the weight of the trucks won't be nearly as heavy as they would have been with the sand and the concrete trucks that they go through there.
Alderman Yielding, and then Alderman Bestle.
Okay, your, your, your trucks are gonna be right at 80,000 pounds, is that what you're saying?
No.
for the service trucks. And it's quicker to go to 440 and dispatch them accordingly. Then if we're transferring this down to Hayes in Arkansas, it's a whole lot easier to go back on 440 and tie it back into 40.
Well, I understand that. Now, I have this question too, maybe for the, for Ed. What about the county road people? What do, what do they say about this? We're fixing to really affect their, their road and their problem. Maybe Robert would be better to ask this.
Yeah, the Public Works Director has contacted me about this. He was going to send a letter to the council. He's concerned about it because of where the road is. And he did suggest something like you're saying, but I haven't seen such a letter and I don't have anything from Sherman Smith today. But 391 and 165 are in much better shape. Now, the section of Faulkner Lake east of the bridge is failing now, so I'm not sure that that's a good proposal either. That's one of the worst sections of the road today.
Well, wasn't that one of the questions that the planning commission raised and asked that you not go that way, that come back out to 440? That was their reclamation, not, not to go the other direction?
We certainly don't want to go in some alleyway.
Let me make one reference as to traffic and the use of traffic. If I may refer us back to the great event of the ice storm?
We don't like to refer that as a great event.
I'm sorry. It was a great event for us because it helped us out, okay? But the primary reason I go back there, we had a huge amount of traffic and I think, Mayor, you can attest to that. This road survived that particular incident, okay? And there were some pretty heavy amounts of traffic with lots of dead weight on there. The road survived that very well. We're not going to be anywhere near that, that level. Now, what happens if we have another ice storm? I hope we don't, but if we do, I think the road will bear that out. Yes, sir, I think you had a question.
Well, Alderman Vestal and Alderman Height?
Alderman Yielding covered the area that I was concerned, only areas I couldn't cover.
Alderman Height?
How are we getting the solid waste after?
Not at all. Zero. I have no contract standing with anybody. We're just trying to put this in place so that we can utilize Hayes and landfill, giving us an alternate use for solid waste disposal.
So, what are you going to be hauling away from?
Well, if we get the transfer station put in there, we're going to be hauling MSW. Right now, right now, all I take is green waste.
All right, how is that called, MSW?
Yes, sir.
How's that going to get out?
Hopefully, city trucks.
What's the weight of our city trucks?
That's a good question, I don't know.
Harold? Now, over the microphone. And where are we going with those 30,000 pound trucks now?
Two pounds.
Two pounds.
Wait, that's 70,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Alderman Yielding?
Well, I just have a statement, I mean, that's kind, I wish, I mean, do we have to do this tonight? Can we get the county to kind of chime in on this and tell us about their, their road problems that they might have? I mean, we're going to make this decision and greatly affect the county's road program by doing this and, well, and here, here again, I mean, we're not talking, we're talking about weight to specific trucks, but it's not just, you know, one or two trucks running through there. It's, it's all day, every day. And if, if you did get a municipal contract, I guarantee you that's going to be a load of trucks running through there heavy, down that road. And if it fails, what are you going to do then? You know, you'll be, somebody, you'll be wanting somebody to fix it. And I guess we've been out there trying to help fix it when it's not even our road because people use it to get to another part of the city. But I, I don't want to be, and I'm all for your business and for doing this, but I'm just looking down the road at spending a lot of money on a road that shouldn't even be there in the first place.
It's not our road.
Being it's not our road.
All right, we, where are we, Ms. Whitby?
It's been read three times.
We're going to ask, I'm going to ask for a motion.
So moved.
Motion?
To adopt.
Is there a second, motion paid and seconded? Any other discussion?
I got one other question. Mayor, I want you to contact the county. The county's got to understand their responsibility to keep this road up. If they choose, and say there's a major red flag, then we need to bring you back to us.
Okay.
Okay.
Ed, you know, you get, get with Mike in the morning and the county and, and make sure we know where this, where this pathway is and I know what the condition of that road is. Any further discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson?
Yes.
Yielding?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let me just mention that, that we're going, we're going to be taking a look at that road because this is still an issue. And what I think what the council may have done, at least I'm going to take it this, and that is, you know, that I have five days to veto this, which is midnight Saturday. And, and so we need to really address our concern about, you know, the condition of that road and, and what it's likely to do. So, well, work, you work with our city engineer, Mike Smith or Ed Chapman there and, and we'll see what, whether we, whether we have some concerns and if so, how serious they are.
And maybe we get the county to pitch in, huh?
We've already talked to them about doing some stuff, that's, that's.
And we have too. And I think, I think we should see support back from them.
Okay.
Because guess what? They might want to use that transfer station.
We always like a little competition.
That's right.
That's all that's on the counter, Ms. Whitby, public comment. Any council member care to make any comments?
I do. I know that we did see a leaf truck today in Rose City. I don't know if we just had one or not, but he's going to be there a long time if we just got one out there.
Well, usually we go in crews. Go over to the microphone if you would, Harold. Because I know everybody wants leaf trucks. All right, we, we usually send them in packs, don't we?
Yes, sir. We're canvassing the city and at this time, we're still working in Midtown to Rose City area. We have about four trucks out in Lynch to Dixie additions right now.
Okay, that's, that's good.
There's still one in Midtown working its way that eastward. Maybe by the end of the week, we'll be headed back up towards the north part of town.
Because I sure, I really got the calls and I, and I hope that they'll do it. I did go out and congratulate you, tell the guys, I was really glad to see them out there. They had that one truck. Now, there may be others that I didn't see, but they knew that there's probably one other. The workers thought there was one other.
We're trying to spread them out to cover as much area as we can. We only have five working right now. It's kind of tough.
Okay. How many do we normally have working?
We have six trucks.
Okay, is that?
Six blowers.
Okay, now, yeah, I know we had an accident on one of our trucks.
And we have one blowers that's down.
And we got that back up?
Yes.
Now, we, what's our problem with one truck?
We've got one blowers down, it's, it's a mechanical problem.
Those people have worked for.
And how fast will it be back up?
That's a good question, I'm not really sure.
Okay, well, why don't you find out, Harold, and let my office know tomorrow and, and to the extent that it's going to be more than 48 hours, you, you know, you tell them we want it back quicker than that. All right?
Any other questions?
No, but one thing we might want to do, before we go into leaf season next year, let's figure out how we might be able to better attack this. I know they all came down about the same time, but I know everybody wants them picked up.
I think, for the record, the, the purpose of the way it was started this year is to attack the heaviest load first. Mondays and Fridays, yard waste days are the heaviest days historically, and that's where we started.
One, one question? Harold, I've gotten a couple of calls from Ward Three residents that they hadn't even seen a leaf truck.
Which area?
I want to recall, that's, I believe it's Chandler. What's, what block is it? Chandler? I've had a couple of calls and I'm not sure the block. I can find out tonight and I'll let you know tomorrow.
Call me in the office tomorrow and I'll investigate it, but we've covered the entire city, the north part, and working on ways, you know, south and east at the same time.
Okay, I'll call, I'll get in touch with you tomorrow. I'll find out the address tonight or in the morning and call you. I know we've had, I know the Christmas holidays, Christmas being and New Year's being right in the middle of the week, has probably done some disruption. But, you know, I, I, why don't you talk to your folks? If y'all want to work Saturday or some, some Sunday and get a little overtime, let me know.
We've been working nine hour days and Saturdays both to try to keep up with the load.
That's enough.
Yeah, well, that's enough.
And our overtime has kind of hit me.
Okay, I mean, we.
Hit me heavy. And, you know, we've had rain days, holidays, and it's, it's been a hindrance.
I agree. We, we understand, we're, we're not, we, we want to try to help any way we can.
We're working as hard as we can.
We believe it.
I got one other question, Mayor.
All right.
Is it really true that this, at our Patrick Henry Hayes Center is going to charge a fee?
They're going to charge a $10 membership fee and that's what the commission indicated. And then there'll be, they, they voted to charge a, Mr. Baxter's there, a $100 if you want to use it, extra hours. So, the answer to that is yes.
That's all I have.
Okay. And that's been reported very frequently and very often. Alderman?
Mayor, you might want to give, since Mr. Charlie is here, give him an opportunity to tell you what all is going to be offered for the $10.
You want to talk to Mr. Baxter and give us a little preview? Alderman Thomas wanted to introduce you to, and the center to the community. And you can tell us a little bit about it because as I understand, we're going to be open for business on the 3rd of February and the open house will be the 2nd on Sunday.
That's great. The dedication service will be the 2nd of February at 1:30. Go from about 1:30 to 4 o'clock. And then Monday morning, the 3rd of February, will open up at 7 o'clock in the morning. And we're staying open from 7 to 7, Monday through Friday. We're going to offer a lot of programs at the center. We've got pool aerobics in the pool, three times a day on some days and two times a day on others. But five days a week, we have pool aerobics. We have line dancing and ballroom dancing, computer classes, computer programs, the opportunity to be on the internet, work on the computer. We have card games, dominoes and, and all sorts of board games, jigsaw puzzles and all that sort of thing. We have a lot of programs we're going to put in there. We've been contacting a lot of people, like the Audubon Society, to have a program with the Audubon Society and have a club there. We've got a lot of health programs, we're trying to create a wellness program. We'll have that done, I believe, by the date that we open. We're also going to have some interesting programs, some speakers that'll come in, guest speakers that'll be there. And so for $10, you can come from 8 to 4:30 Monday through Friday and use those programs, be, be a part of that. You can take care of, take part of any of those that I've mentioned at no extra charge. If we do have any programs that cost money, like having to, if we start pottery classes, I understand the clay is an expense and the wheels are an expense and so there may be some charge for those particular things. But the ceramics, we're trying to make that free. We're trying to have quilting classes and not only quilting, but also lectures and programs on quilts and their histories and so forth. We'll have all sorts of connections to the History Commission. We're going to have a program there that's about the historic district and the History Commission. And then we're going to have a program where we take oral histories at the center and people can come and tell their family histories and their histories of things that go on in North Holorock. We're just trying to develop a whole array of things that you can be involved in. 50 and older is the age limit. We're trying to make it where it's as inexpensive as it can be and we have as many programs there as we, we can have, 8 to 4:30 Monday through Friday. But the fee for the $100, which I guess has maybe been a little bit misunderstood, but that's for the working people to come after work so we can generate a little bit of income, help pay for the overtime hours or the extra hours for part-time help to keep the building open during those times. And there won't be any extra services after hours. In fact, there'll actually be fewer services after hours. It'll be a good place to come, work out and use the swimming pool. The building's going to be the exact same building and the same concepts that, from 8 to 4:30, as is from 8 to 4:30. The only thing we won't have is as much staff there and we won't have as many programs there after hours.
And you have bingo there too, huh?
We're going to try to have bingo. We're trying to arrange bingo just like other centers have where we have prizes that are donated. It won't be, there won't be any charge for bingo cards, so it will be within keeping with state law. And then we also have the center, the rooms available for rent. We're renting the ballroom and the classroom and, and then we could rent the whole building. I don't think anybody will really want to do that, but mostly it's the ballroom for wedding receptions and for events for senior citizens.
There could be, the audio visual is fairly sophisticated, is it not?
Extremely sophisticated. We're going to get trained on that in the next week or so, but in the ballroom, as an example, there are screens that come down on either side of the room. The room, ballroom will seat 400 theater style, 250 banquet style, and it will divide in the middle so that there will be a screen on either side. We could show two movies at one time or a movie on each screen at the same time. And, and the, there's a sensor, when the room divides, the divider comes in, it disconnects the lights so what, they'll work on one side and then the other. And then when the screen is pulled back apart, then the lights all work in tandem, so. But it's very sophisticated. We're able to show movies, DVD or VHS, either one, and we have lots of capabilities there. I need to learn a lot more about that, but it's, it's all there.
So, the fees has been planned all the time?
What we tried to do was to hold it down as, as low as we could. And when we were looking at it, the fee that, with the $10 fee is what we're trying to utilize that basically is going to recoup the cost of the card, the membership card and the, and the operation of keeping up with the membership. We felt that we had to have some control of membership or, or some sort of identification process because if we were had it for people 50 and older and we wanted to make sure that we could know who was coming in out of the building and we know what was going on.
We don't want kids in there, right?
We don't want kids in there. And the other thing that we want to make sure, what we're going to ask people when they apply for membership is if they have any physical ailments or anything that, that we might know about, that if, let's say they strain themselves on some of the physical equipment up there and we had to call 911, we'd like to have the information there that would tell what it was so we could help them as quickly as we possibly could. So, we felt an application fee gave us the opportunity to glean that information and then provide them a card to let them in out of the building.
Are you going to have certified, quote unquote, trainers down there to kind of supervise utilization and participation on that gym equipment?
We're going to have, we have been trained on how to use the equipment itself. Now, I've been trained, so I had an hour class and that, that's not a certification by any means. But we're going to have volunteers there to show people how to utilize the equipment. In addition to that, what I'm trying to do is to find some certified trainers and find out what their fees might be. And that would be something, if we brought that into the center, we might have to charge for that too, to get a personal trainer there. I am writing a grant and I'm looking for some grant money to make those certified trainers be available to the general public and let them utilize those. So, no, we won't have any certified people there in the beginning. We will have volunteers there to show how to turn the equipment on and how to utilize it. And if we can provide that, we will do that.
How do we stand then from a liability standpoint of view, people using that equipment down? Probably ought to ask our city attorney that.
I think clearly it'd just fall under the tort immunity of the city. Same thing anytime we have accidents that occur in parks, we're protected by tort immunity.
To answer you, our, our, probably one of the strongest tort immunities for municipalities or for governmental entities that there is. And while we, we certainly don't want anybody to be hurt, we're asking people to be very careful, you know, because their, their insurance will have to cover whatever accidents they might have.
One of the additional things is in, that's a part of the application process too, is to acknowledge that you're there on your own and, and you're not expecting training from us.
So, how deep is your swimming pool?
It's five feet at the deepest and three point, three and a half feet at the most shallow point. It actually has a ramp that comes in, a handicap ramp to come into the pool.
So, there's no diving up there with those senior citizens?
No diving.
Okay. And you got lifeguards?
No, we will not have lifeguards on duty. We're planning on having a volunteer down there. There are signs clearly are being posted. In fact, we were developing some of the signs this afternoon to talk about the rules in the pool and, and the, and the cautions.
And this is fairly ordinary in terms of?
We have met state law with that. When we designed the pool in the first place, we wanted to make sure that we did not have to have lifeguards on duty and that's the case. We've had the state health department there looking the pool over and they ask us to post some additional signage and so we're getting that developed.
So, how do I get a membership application?
Just barely. Just barely 50?
I'm younger than the mayor.
We.
Just barely.
I'll get you one, you have mine.
We, we will have those available after the city attorney looks them over, probably in about a week and a half.
I'd appreciate it.
All right, any other questions? We look forward to it. It's an awful, it's awful exciting. I bump into people all the time that are looking forward to the opening of that facility.
It's a beautiful building and I wish you'd come down and take a look at it and be involved in it. I think it's something that's going to be a real place to enjoy company of others. Thank you.
In fact, we have one of our commissioners who are here, if I'm not mistaken, he's got a red t-shirt on.
He's instructor of the line dance.
Yeah. Any other comments for any council member, Alderman Vestal?
Mr. Suskey, how is the progress of our annexation, de-annexation of the good folks out there in Mayor Reynolds area?
It is set for trial. I believe it's, and I know it's in February and I think the exact date's February 10th. So, hopefully after that hearing, we'll have a decision.
Thank you. One thing I might mention, in case any council member wasn't aware, the city was successful in its lawsuit in clearing title to the seven acres and the four acres that are immediately west of the Broadway Bridge. And we're going to be looking real hard for a quality development that might be able to go on that property. Microphone's open. Mr. Ard, state your name and floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Wish everybody a happy new year. This is our first meeting for the new year and I'd like to share one thing with you. And I had a friend of mine pass away on December the 23rd. Murray and I went to school in Alderwoodshire. And his attitude towards the way city handled things, even when they was in a wrong, was great. They did a write-up in the North Holorock Times, I hope all of you have read it. I know Alderman Thomas even made sure he got a copy for a change. But his attitude towards something the city did that they possibly was in error was great. He said they had a job to do and they did it, even though it cost him a $4,000 van by the rules and regulations. But I think this, if all the citizens could have this attitude, me included, this would be a lot better place to live.
You might want to speak his name while you're.
Larry Atterbury.
Thank you very much.
Everybody knows me, I'm Joe Reynolds and I just had a letter that Stuart Vest put out the other day and the date for the hearing for the annexation, summary of judgment is the 20th of February at 8:30 in the morning in Judge Humphreys Court. And the summary of judgment could not be the end of it. Is this true, Paul? If you do a summary of judgment, then you have another, they have another avenue that they can continue on?
Essentially, motions for summary judgment are crossed. We agree to the facts and so it's going to be a legal argument. So, I think once this is decided, either side can appeal, which could obviously, you know, take more time.
Yeah, okay. I have one other comment about U-Haul trucks. We seem to be talking a lot about U-Haul trucks and we have a lot of information here